All right, good morning, everybody. Today's date is Monday, March 28th, 2022, 9:00 AM. I'll call this meeting to an end. Our first item of business is our pledge and dedication led by Commissioner King.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free and public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner King, very honored to look at you this morning, just thanking you for the mercy and grace that you have bestowed on the state of California. Lord, as that we deal with people in Ukraine, help them in their current situation, just help me with that situation first. And Lord, we pray for those that are still living with this COVID, and Lord, just help them and their families through all this stuff. And Lord, we ask for discernment, to be honest, in your voice, in your voice, Lord. And we ask for wisdom, hope as we go with these items on the agenda. And Lord, we thank you so much, down on the crossroads, and we pray in your most precious name.
All right. Our first action is to approve amendments of the regular meetings of March 14th, 2022, special meetings of March 11th, 22, 2022, and March 18th of 2022. Have those minutes, got your motion to approve of this writ? Motion made by Commissioner King, you're second. Second, by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, let me end that, brings us to our second item, our audit.
The first thing I have is, I'm just gonna say it again. Our trend is to recognize unbudgeted revenue. The Justice Center broken pipe caused water damage to carpet and two bookcases, and the revenue received has been recorded in insurance recoveries, and this is in the amount of And I had previously brought to the court part of this money to recognize. The total amount we received was $28,960.43, but I bring in the rest of it because we finally finished those other two expenses, and I'll have those in just a moment. But that's the revenue side.
Okay, so you've heard the insurance recovery in the amount of $27,510.05. And this is to recognize the unbudgeted revenue. Got your motion to approve this budget amendment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, you're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
My next budget amendment is for the Justice Center insurance recoveries for King Carpet Plus in the amount of $22,259.60. And this is to recognize the unbudgeted expense to replace the carpet in the district clerk's office, the extension office, and the hallways due to the broken pipe that caused water damage, and the revenue received has been recorded in insurance recoveries.
You've heard the to recognize unbudgeted expense to replace the carpet in the district clerk's office, the extension office, and hallways caused by the broken pipe, and this was payable to King Carpet Plus in the amount of $22,259.60. Got your motion to approve this budget amendment? Motion made by Commissioner King, you're second. Second, by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
My last budget amendment is to recognize unbudgeted expense for the extension office to insurance recoveries, and they ordered their two bookcases from wheel.com, and that was in the amount of $269.98 to replace those bookcases caused by the broken pipe causing water damage, and the revenue has been received in insurance recoveries.
To recognize unbudgeted expense in the amount of $269.98, they were from wheel.com to replace the bookcases. Got your motion to approve this budget amendment? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, you're second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
My next item is to discuss, approve, and allow the county judge to initial where applicable on the advanced security services section of the Watch It with Cyber Defense Service, a statement of work under CTSI, or service agreement, and name and authorize contact. And previously, we had this on the agenda, and there was confusion exactly what the court needed to sign, but these were things that were discussed previously. The first one is the breach prevention platform, and what this is, is the cybersecurity training that we did through TAC, so you'll just initial there that we're going to decline that at the moment. And then the accepted by client is a comprehensive combined security information and event management as a service with Security Operations Center, and this is already included in the original contract. And then also declined by client, the annual comprehensive internal vulnerability scan. We're not going to do that at this time. And then the annual security policies development workshop, we're going to decline that at this time. But down at the bottom of that is where you would do the authorized contact, and I believe that's probably going to be Carla Cannon will be the, since she's our IT, she'll probably be the authorized contact, and that's what the court chooses.
Okay, so you've heard the explanation from Melinda, and to accept this advanced security services from Watch It, the cyber defense service, and allow me to sign an initial word appropriate, got your motion to approve that? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, you're second. Second, by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The next item we have is our criteria report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I heard one good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
I've got the financial report for the month ending February 28th. Okay, I have the financial report for February 28th, 2022, the monthly closing balance. Are you all ready? We need to drumroll for this one. Thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy, thirty-one million. Thirty-one million. You didn't have to drumroll. Okay, thirty-one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. I hereby certify that this report is true and correct, and request to place it in the minutes.
Okay.
Is that how it better, guys?
So after that little bit of acceptance, you've heard the financial statement for the month ending February 28th, in a closing balance of thirty-one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Got your motion to accept this financial statement? Make the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any questions, sir? Come here.
I would like to point out Judge Fund 85 on the second page, we got eight hundred and forty-five thousand, three sixty-three, nineteen, and that is still not considering what has been transferred.
The roll.
Will be transferred. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Okay, my next item is the affidavit that will be placed in the newspaper just stating that the court has received, reviewed, and approved the financial report.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the affidavit, to place it in the paper regarding our financial report? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, you're second. Second, by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Oh, I should change.
All right, next item is my report. It is, the first item is Peter Burkey MS run financial report for March of 2022. So the, excuse me, three dispatches for the month of March, rate available per, and all of the transports were within the six months. Actually, this says for March, but it's actually for February. And the total revenue for February was ninety-seven dollars. Total expenses was twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-three, four thousand, or a difference of negative twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-six, three thousand. I've got here a motion to accept this financial and activity report from Peter Burkey MS for the month of February 2022. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The second item I have is not really an action item, it's just to let you know that we have received confirmation that we have submitted all the requirements for reimbursement for the voting machine, and so I did get a confirmation of that back. I'll give it one in place in a minute, just to recognize, we've already voted on doing that, this is just, the process was completed, Latrice was able to get the items she needed from the party or sent in, so just for information, we completed that. And then the last item is in regards to magistrate duties under Senate Bill 6, the Damon Allen Act. We talked about that on Friday. Is there any, I know we all may still have some questions about it, but what we've talked about there, Judge Collins, to our magistrate on a full-time basis, at least until we can get this all situated and make all of us receive our training and learn how to do it before, so. Sharon, do you have anything you want to add to that?
You can go first, or I can. Judge, I received a call from the magistrate this morning, concerned about this topic. I'd like to get your opinion and follow.
Okay. Now, we may have to have a special meeting because this will kick off on Friday.
I have a call from Adam. We have either way to go, but I'm kind of a white genius, and I heard that, I think we need to have a special call, because we get everybody in the same room.
Yeah.
So they don't feel like they got that down.
Okay. Okay, so we'll tag this with no action and complete.
We have a special call.
Put that meeting together. Okay. Then that Texas card next item, which is Judge Collins and Judge Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If we visited on Friday, what we are here to request, that we, the contract that we currently have with South Plains Forensics Pathology, we are requesting to terminate that contract, and would like to have Mr. Tyree submit a letter, now that we have a choice. We want to change and work with the Texas Pet Handel Forensics, which is owned by Dr. Louisa Floris, which is one of the doctors that we've worked with closely over the last few years.
Any questions on Judge Collins? Do I hear a motion to approve the termination of this contract with South Plains? That's all you're asking for?
Yes, if this stop, that's all we're asking.
Okay, is to allow a termination agreement between Hill County and South Plains Forensics to be approved. Motion made by Commissioner King, you're second. Second, by Commissioner Daniel. Any questions?
Judge, as y'all authorize me to send a letter, if that's what you want me to do, and then also Judge Davis had called this morning and asked me to tell y'all that she has court this morning, but she's in favor of this as well.
Okay.
Which I think was applied from Judge Collins' statement. I told her I'd pass the law, so I don't like to not do what I tell a judge I'll do.
Okay, so Harold, would your amendment include the fact that Jim would send a letter? And his second? Any other questions? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank y'all.
All right, next item we have is Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
I just have one item of personnel this morning. It is the hiring of Samantha Gonzalez, 3-9 of 2022, its effective date, certified jailer in a group 13, step 2, bi-weekly salary of 1,247.03.
So you've heard the request from the sheriff for the hiring of Samantha Gonzalez, effective date 3-9, 2022, had a pay rate 13.2, bi-weekly 1,247.03. Got your motion to accept this position? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, you're second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
My next item is Michael Ray, effective date 3-26, 2022. He is going from a certified jailer of 13.16, bi-weekly salary of 18, 1,817, to a jail sergeant through a group 14, step 16, bi-monthly salary of 1,891.31.
Same effective date?
Yes, 3-26 of 2022.
3-26, yes, sir. All right, so you've heard the request to take Michael Ray from a 13.16, 14.16, effective date 3-26.22. The 3.16 was 18.17, the 14.16 is 18.91.31. Got your motion to approve that personnel action?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, you're second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion?
Judge, I'm sorry, I would just like to state for the record that Michael's being promoted and Yama is stepping down as sergeant.
Yes. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, our next item is first by Citizen Jim Tyree, who said he might have that person.
Good morning, I'll need a minute. I'll second. Changing period, I'll second. The first thing I was coming to ask this morning on behalf of the Plague New Ban Boostr is to be able to use the Ollie Liner Center without a charge, rental charge on April 22nd for the PHS ban banquet, and as I said on Friday, this is basically the Boostr's just acting on behalf of the school, because there's less red paint, so we do some of the school districts, so this will be for the awards presentation and the events afterwards.
All right, so you've heard the request to use the Ollie Liner Center for the Plague New Ban Boostr banquet on April 22nd. Do I hear a motion to approve this request?
I will make the motion, Judge, if you have a question.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, you're second. Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank you very much. And then my next item on the county attorney's side is to ask you to consider setting a public hearing for a creation of a reinvestment zone. There is another summer project that is looking to build down toward Abernathy, this is where northeast of Abernathy. Judge and I met with Randy Soul, who's the kind of the project head out here on Tuesday, last Tuesday, and he's telling us this is going to involve about 4,300 acres, more or less. If it's all built, it'll be a 500 megawatt facility, and they're looking at somewhere between 448 million and 497 million dollars in capital expenditures on the project, so if it's all built out, and also will include a battery storage facility. And so the first step, part of this is, it's a little early as far as us thinking about any kind of tax abatement, because they're not looking up until, I don't have it written down, they're not looking, I think, until maybe getting some operations in maybe 2026 or something like that, 2025, but the legislature, for whatever stupid reason, let the chapter 313 of the tax code lapse, or it will expire at the end of the year, and that's what the school districts can use for economic development. And so there is a huge rush right now, this being one of the things in the rush, to get things into the controller's office for approval by the end of the year, so. And part of that, as well as our any tax abatement, Joe, I consider is creating reinvestment zones, so this would just set the public hearing, and I'd ask you to authorize me to publish the notice in the papers required, and send out notices to the other tax entities, which will be the school district and the groundwater conservation district.
Any other?
Oh, I'm sorry, that would be important. I was looking at May 9th, the y'all's regular meeting that day, we can do it as part of that, and that gives us enough time to get the notices and things published and sent out.
All right, you've heard the reasoning from Jim and what this is about. Do I hear a motion to set May 9th, 2022, as a public hearing date for this Jupiter Mallard project? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, you're second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any questions from Jim? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank y'all, Judge, I didn't get that here for work, but I'll run by your office. The next thing is the school district is holding several school board elections, seat elections, this Plague New School, independent school district, this May, and they are asking and wanting to do a joint election, I think they're required by law to do the joint election if there's a county election going on, so they have sent an agreement that would just, agreement for them to hold their elections jointly with the county, and of course, that's the data to run off for a few statewide positions, and then have what constitutional amendments are on the ballot from the two special sessions that the legislature had, so this would just put all that in effect, and does things like the point of Latrice is the early voting judge, and some other things for her office to do, and she has signed off on it, agreeing to do it as the county.
So do I hear a motion to approve a contract for election services for the 2022 between Kokian and Plague New School District, and authorize me to sign? Also, motion made by Commissioner King, you're second. Second, by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
That brings us to our next item, which is our district clerk.
Can I do Samantha, say? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know what I'm on, first word, but I'll just do it all. Okay, I'm here to ask for 12 licenses to be paid at, Microsoft Office license to be paid at the computer fund, and also to ask if I can purchase these without always having to come for every one of them, but first, let's go with that, 2,064.39. I think Melinda was going to check on it. Did you check on that?
Give me that number.
Oh, 2,064.39 cents. And this is, it's the Microsoft Office that everybody has to have on their computer.
And that's for 12 of them?
Yes.
And that is at the court's discretion, because you control that department, it's actually a department in Fontana, so you control that, so if you want to allow Carla to purchase those, as she purchases the computers, you can certainly do that.
So we need to approve this one-time fund that she's asking for, and then we can...
And allow her to, in the future, to buy those licenses and pay 4,000 as needed.
All right, so you've heard the request from Carla, do I hear a motion to approve the 12 purchases in the amount of 2,064.39, and with that, also... And with that, also allow her to purchase these Microsoft Office licenses as needed.
Out of the computer fund.
Out of the computer. Do I hear that? Motion. Also, a motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Millman. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
And the next thing I'm asking is that, uh, I purchased a laptop and set it up for Vicki at Precise Three, and to pay for that out of the computer fund. And it's four hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for this.
Okay. All right. So, you've heard the request to pay for the laptop for Precise Three out of your fund in the amount of forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Do I hear that? Motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kellen. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay. The last thing is, um, we're back to having our jury go into the jury room. And so, um, I, as I was telling you on Friday, the TV that we have there is the one we purchased about sixteen years ago. And so, really, your laptop screen and your TV screen, they're not a lot bigger. And, um, they had been used in the ag department, and they have the TV up on the wall, and it's a good size, so they would, we could hook the laptops up and show videos and everything. And so, um, I'm wanting to purchase one and purchase the deals to hang it on the wall. I don't know how much it is. I haven't found a TV or anything, and I was just coming to see if I could get that. And I probably don't think I would spend over five hundred dollars or above. You might do seven fifty, and then Melinda was going to see where we could pay for it for. And you can pay for it out of the computer fund as well. We have the jury fund also. Yeah. We're going to do that. Okay.
You probably better do the seven fifty. I don't know what the expenses that mounting stuff is.
I don't need it. That's the one thing I can know it.
All right. So, you heard the request, uh, anyone, or who wants to make the motion to allow Carla to purchase a, uh, a television and a mounting, uh, set, uh, to, uh, place there in the jury room, not to exceed the seven hundred and fifty dollars. Do I hear that? Okay. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Millman. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right. Thank you so much.
The next item we have is, uh, a request from the Crisis Center of the Plains. They're just asking that, uh, maybe we'll be able to use the courthouse grounds for the walk-in model to shoot fundraiser to help the office to balance essential solvency. They've been doing this, I guess, the last couple of years at Ollie Liner. They want to come back to the, to the courthouse grounds. Do I hear a motion to allow them to do that? Motion made by Commissioner Kellen. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellen. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Our next item is, uh, walk-in.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, briefly, we're asking, uh, Commissioner's Court to authorize the judge to enter into a contract with Vicki Bowles. They're the folks that have our, um, postage machine. And they're kind of like the copy people. Every so often, they're going to phase out what you've got or make it obsolete, make another one. And that's basically where we are. Currently, we're paying fifty-two, fifty-six a month, and that's billed on a quarterly basis. The cheapest one we can get, which is basically comparable to what we're using right now, is fifty-eight, fifty-six. Again, that's billed, uh, quarterly as well, which comes to about a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Not a whole lot of difference. Uh, naturally, they had two or three other programs of that that were more. But I don't know how you get away from anything that keeps us happy with expense. That's how it works, as far as I'm concerned.
So, you've heard the request to, uh, enter into a contract with Vicki Bowles on lease on the postage machine in the amount of fifty-eight dollars and fifty-eight, or fifty-six cents per month. Allow me to sign that agreement. Your motion to approve that. Motion made by, uh, Commissioner Miller. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we could leave this for you to sign, and then we could scan it in, or we can email it to you, and you can sign it electronic, whichever one you want. It doesn't matter. Can I just leave this one? Just leave that. Thank y'all. May I be excused? Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Our next item is Samantha Anthony.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
Um, so, I'm here today to request, um, some office space used over at the top floor of the Veterans and Indigenous Building. Um, I'm currently a permanency specialist for St. Francis Ministries. And I'm sure that y'all are not familiar with that. Um, formerly, I was a worker with the Department of Family Protective Services, CPS. Um, starting March second, um, that department has been contracted out by St. Francis. Um, and so, now I'm a worker with, um, St. Francis Ministries. But I cover, um, these cases for Hill County and a couple of other surrounding counties. And we don't have any office space here in Hill County to work from. So, I was requesting some, just some office space used, um, for myself and a couple of other workers that cover here in Hill County, those CPS cases. Um, it would not cost the, the county any additional money, I don't believe. Um, we have our own Wi-Fi, laptops, cell phones, so, um, I don't need anything additional, um, just the, the use of this space.
Any questions of Samantha? If not, do I hear a motion to allow her to do this? I'll make the motion made by Commissioner Kellen. Do I hear your second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Jim, would we need any type of agreement or, or anything, uh, since they're not going to be using anything other than this space?
Judge, it would probably be do this to have something simple at least. And, um, I will say I work, I worked with Samantha and her colleagues for many years, and I certainly found you work, but, um, for their protection and ours, it would probably be to have something in writing, which I can come up with something.
Okay. Would you? Oh, good morning. Okay. Do I hear second? Okay.
Judge, I would like to say something, uh, in regards to that. I know that Sylvie Duquette was telling me there's some issues upstairs. I didn't, I needed to come to the court, uh, intended to come to the court regarding that. I don't know if y'all want to maybe do a walkthrough and see if, what's going on there? You know? So, before they move in, just in case.
Okay.
So.
And obviously, I have your big, uh, the offices up there, so, uh, like I said, before you, I guess, get situated on Hill County, I'm sure that is pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'll have Jesse go with you. Those are yours.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item we have is Commissioner Precise One. Okay. So, we'll table that action. And that brings us to our next item, which is, uh, Commissioner Precise.
Okay. To the time and stuff that we have these days, nobody can really afford it. Seventy-five. This company I'm working with bought, uh, a dispenser from, uh, Full Time. Requesting to get plenty, uh, before they ordered these, uh, dispensers. So, like I posted, they pay around sixty percent of that, seven thousand, seven hundred and seven ninety-one.
When you're saying those lots of seven?
Seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars in articles.
And what, what, what's the name of them?
It's, uh, DNA, nine, human exclusion. They're a lot of tests.
What do you have?
Well, you might go ahead and tell them the total cost is going to be twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six, option fifty-one cents. So, he'll pay the seventy percent. He's asking to pay the sixty percent of rent of that seven thousand, seven hundred and seven ninety-one. And then, though, once completed, he'll pay the five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight sixty on completion.
You read that in your motion?
Yes.
All right. You've heard the motion from Commissioner Kellen. Do I hear second? I'll second. Second by Commissioner King. Any other questions?
And we can pay that?
I agree.
On the run this week. You don't need a check today.
Uh, well, what was it?
Do you want us to do a check today?
Yes.
Okay. Then you may discuss that.
Oh.
Because we cannot do that.
And, uh, add to the motion, uh, and for us to issue a check tonight, the second. You're good with that? Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. That concludes our agenda today. We stand adjourned. The time is nine forty-two eighteen. Thank y'all.